Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our joint session with our enamorous Arts Commission. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meeting for being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, I will call this meeting to order, and we'll just go around the room and introduce ourselves. Start with Jonathan.
Hi, Jonathan Saida, Parks Project Mini.
Hi, I'm Katie Ludeman. This is my first year on the board.
Christina Solz, Arts Commission.
Beth Porter, City Council.
Sean Smith on the council.
Jeff Wagner, your mayor.
Debbie Hartzock on council.
Paloma Moreno, Vice Chair.
Joe Simomo, City Council.
Jennifer Harja-Helton, City Council.
Liz Alberg, Art Commission.
And Bill Bah, Art Commission.
And who's the young man right next to you? Okay.
Junior.
There we go. Well, thank you all for being here. We do have Ethan and Krista sitting up at the dais, joining us as well. And so we're going to turn it over to Paloma. Welcome. Thank you for being here, everybody.
But I just make a request to make sure everyone has their microphones on when they're speaking, and please speak somewhat loudly and clearly so that the recording will pick you up. Thank you.
Just have everybody leave their microphones on.
Wait. One second. Is it her? No. Well, okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us at our 2024 Joint Council Session Meeting. Thank you. A pleasure. All right, so should we? I guess only one here is not, is Riley and Andrea? Don't anyone is not here? So, yeah, I guess we've met the whole team. All right, so we're gonna start off in four essential compact units throughout our presentation. We're gonna do our community engagement, including our recap of Spring Makers Market, Covington Days, and Kids Fest. Then we will move on to our completed projects, rotating art call and utility wraps. Then we will move on to our ongoing projects, being the Karma Collective, and our upcoming projects, being the murals and crosswalks. Okay, we're gonna start off by our community engagement. At the top right and at the top, at the bottom left, we can see our pictures from our, no, excuse me, just at the top right. Our Spring Makers Market was a success with our creation station, a hands-on designed opportunity for families to engage in creative activities, such as painting, various craft projects, DIY sculptures, opportunity for the community to really stand in with their creative side and families. The station was constantly buzzing with energies as families gathered to collaborate on these unique creations, breaking creativity and meaningful connection. With supplies provided by us, the commission, the creation station became a highlight of the event, as was noted by community comments. Me and Liz were the ones pretty much manning down, and the booth was filled the entire time. The booth was buzzing. It was filled with children, with teenagers, with grandparents, with parents. It was lovely to see the community come together. On the bottom right, we can see our, on the bottom right and on the bottom left, was our Covington Days Giant Fill-in Karma Art Project. Also, one, one of the biggest hits that I think we've had project-wise, that was a big one. The community really seemed to love coming in with this interactive art installation. We invited community members of all ages. Again, really wonderful to see all community members of all walks of life just coming in to express their own creativity. The concept behind the project was simple but powerful. Each participant filled in a portion of the mural, symbolizing the shared spirit and positive energy of our community. The response was overwhelming, I guess, on social media, in real life, by community members, even weeks, months. I think it's still there, actually, at the medical office. Yes, it's still there. They asked us to keep it there. It was a really great response, yeah. In my opinion, the project not only showcased creativity, but it embodied the idea of karma, the good that we contribute as individuals, positively impacting the whole, and that, for me, really stood out. On the top left, we have our Kids Fest, our activity, our latest activity, our Great Bubble Experience, which was also a pretty big hit. It wasn't just a fun activity. We use this as, again, a hub for community engagement. Families, families and families and inclusivity for folks that could not as well play with their, with with the mobility that they have. We had some activities standing up, running around, sitting down. We had a lot of chances for a lot of inclusive opportunities to be able to express our community's inner creativity. Yeah, we helped, we helped Covington become an exceptional community by really highlighting its artistic aspects, and that is bigger than we could ever imagine. Yeah, that was our big community engagement for the past year. Yeah, that was my slide, so fantastic. All right.
And our ongoing art, rotating art project, Phase Two. The Crow, which is still standing, was by Matt, is by Matt Babcock, who has quite a few different ones in the local area. He's more local. Say he's from Covington, but I think that's more of the Puget Sound area as, as a whole. And fortunately, the Blue Spire by Jerry Newsom was vandalized by Rocks the day before the ribbon cutting, which is heartbreaking for those of us who picked that one out, thinking that, you know, it would be durable and not even thinking vandalism, but it was an expensive but lesson learned as far as going forward. New policy requirement is no glass, nothing breakable, no sharp objects to, you know, someone could get hurt on. But we will be putting out another call to artists later on in 2025 for more projects to replace the Blue Spire and also for Founder's Park. But yeah, I think it just brings interest and feelings to our community, especially the ones all around, you know, the ones reading books or so on and so forth. It's just, it makes us all feel better.
It might have already been on the plans, and I may not have really focused in. How many rotating art pads will we have at Founder's Park? Do we have a number yet?
Jonathan, do you have a?
None on the slate at Founder's Park, but there is one in development, actually, at Jenkins Creek Park.
Jenkins.
Okay, so that's Jenkins, not Founder's.
Yeah. My mistake.
But there is one going in. If you've driven by the roundabout at Jenkins Creek Park and seen where the new sign is, it's actually going to be just a little bit beyond that, further into the parking lot, but very, very viewable from the roundabout.
Okay, thank you.
Sean. Just reiterate my suggestion. I'll reiterate my suggestion from last year. I think going forward, you know, having a plaque or something and with a QR code so people can learn more and interact with the art would be great, because I was just asking, wonder how many people have seen this, you know? Get some metrics on, you know, downloading, and then working on a schedule for rotating that art on a fairly regular basis so that people know, it's spring, I need to get back out there and see that new art, so. Again, reiterate that suggestion.
Thank you, Sean.
And Karma Rocks is an ongoing project that is part of the Karma Collection and engaging in the community for the past year or so. I've been hiding Karma and friends at Covington Community Park along the trail or close to water spouts or barbecues or close to playground or whatever, grass. And we've done some Halloween collections, and please feel free to take one and hide one or pass it on or whatever, but we see in the future a broader engagement with the community as far as expanding our locations outside of the park and to other parks, but and the Art Commission is hoping to look at one of our festivals or Makers Market, have a lot of rocks, and let the kids start painting rocks and other art projects along the way at the parks or whatever, or just it's, when you find a rock, it's just magic, and it just brings a smile, or at least it does to me, and when I've seen kids or heard kids behind me with their moms or whatever, the thrill. It's like an easy easy task to rock, to make people smile and be part of community, and spreading the word of karma. Everyone.
Christina.
Who's drawing these? They're really good.
Oh, thank you. Those are our main. This mission project.
Thanks. Sorry, I saw them on the table. Hear about it. Lacy does something similar. They have an Instagram page called Lacy Rocks, where they pass and promote their painted rocks. I don't know how, but this reminds me of Maple Valley's Troll Trail, kind of creating something unique and funky for Covington. And it, again, would be great if there was some way, maybe if we're doing this a short URL, that, again, people could later maybe even track where their rock's gone. I've seen Chance on Dollar Bills. He's got a website. He said, hey, where's this building, you know? You can go in and say, yeah, I did it in L.A. yesterday, now it's in Miami. So, I don't know, it's a lot of work, but just it's always good to get people's engagement even, oh, that's Covington's rock.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you. Thank you.
We've got our utility wraps that are coming around. Utility wrap Phase Four, and these are obviously pictures of blank blocks. We've got, so one, two, three over here on the left side, and their location, and one, three over there on the right side. And our plans for them, and you guys have recently seen all the selected photo or the artworks for them. And so if anybody's any questions, we'll go right to them. Yep, these are, as we've mentioned in the past, we leave that up to the company, the professionals, to determine like the size and the arch and how it goes to each box and fits best. We know there's there's those, we'll probably have a preference for Founder's Park, assuming that's a super special park for you guys. But other than that, most likely, it's going to be whatever they suggest, and we'll take a look and we'll prove it. We've got some fantastic artwork coming our way to put on those boring boxes to brighten up the community. We're super excited about that. And we know we have a couple more coming up next year. We'll be looking at a new theme. This theme was Pacific Northwest. I know it's pretty basic, but we just want to see more nature, more art, more color put into the community, and this is what we got back. We were really impressed with everything that we saw. And so we'll be excited to do a new theme next year, when that comes around for the boxes that pop up next year. Anybody have any questions about that one?
I do. I know it's going to take on what, how the manufacturer, the artist is going to work it on the boxes, but for Founder's Park, I would love to see either the bottom left or the bottom right over there, because we will have the town center and hopefully have concerts and stuff there at some point.
Bottom, which ones is just?
The bottom left or the bottom right? I mean, any of them will look perfect at Founder's Park.
Thank you.
We'll see what they come up with, then.
And if it doesn't, that's fine. I mean, it's just whatever fits the box.
We usually have this special spot, so we want to see what they come back with, and hopefully we can, if we can judge them, or we even have options. That would be nice to know.
Now, if Jonathan and Ethan have different ideas, that's fine, too.
Thank you for your preference. I appreciate it.
All right, Karma Collective, personal fashion of mine. So this time, I know you guys are really aware of it. We'll do a quick salter. So, as you guys know, I moved here from Virginia Beach, being in the military, and I fell in love with Norfolk, Virginia's mermaids. There were this gorgeous, beautiful statue that everybody knew when they drove through Norfolk, Virginia to see these mermaids, and I, like, when you see them, you think Norfolk, and I wanted something when I moved to Covington, that when you see them, you come through and you think Covington and you brand, and I'm like, I'm really picking up what you're putting down, Sean, with this, this, every time you see something artistic, the rocks, the artworks, that it kind of leads you back, and it might be a website or something that we kind of like, pull it back to our, our government Art Commission website. And that might, this is where it's probably leading to, but when you see karma, you think Covington. And so that's where it's coming to, and so I put some examples up there, but this is really a cooperation between the Arts Commission and the Economics Commission, and it offers a city branding, citizen participation, and inclusion, because it's kind of twofold. You've got the city will purchase two to four karmas, really depending upon the budget, and how far they want to go, or you guys want to go into it. We'll set the examples for the local businesses, and this is coming off of studying a couple of different cities, how they go about doing it. But it limits how far we go into it in our economic, budgetary commitment. We buy, we pay for the development fee of the mold, and then after that, the businesses just have to actually buy the karmas after, and then we just have to pay and take care of our own karmas. After that, the businesses buy their own karmas, and they decorate them according to their own style. I threw up some examples, so maybe you could get an idea of what it would look like. By the way, this is just our karma from the cartoon. It does not have to look like this. That's one of the things on the next slide we'll talk about, but we actually have to determine and decide upon, decide, like, what this karma would look like. It could be more refined. This karma could be more chameleon-looking, less cartoonish, but for Costco, we got, we talked to them, and they wanted to do one, they could do it in their own design. Same thing for Valley Medical. It could look like a surgeon. If it was a child's school, the kids could come out and get involved and take, make it their own. Or top right, nature, it doesn't even have to look, like I said, it doesn't have to look like a chameleon at all. Like, that's the point of chameleon, right? It looks like surroundings. So ours, of course, we can go to the next slide. These are kind of the outstanding things that are next steps that we have. So we have the manufacturer, which is Icon Poly. Looked around the nation. It's a niche developmental product. It did look local, to try to look local, because it's easier to ship and order and purchase local, but the places we reached out to, they, they don't do that. That's not what they do to change everything in their manufacturing process. Not, it's not something, I got a lot of negative feedback, and that's something they would like to do. So for the local, there are the nationwide places that I looked at that do mascot development. Icon Poly was by far the lowest pricing, so that was probably the best. And I've got their pricing for their design from four feet, five feet, six feet. And then we know everything that they provide, and I've got their shipping costs. So we just need to get their, our final karma design, what we want to, we could put that up for approval. We have to decide what kind of statue height we want, because that determines pricing. And then installation locations for our city, like what we want to determine, where we want to be. I think there's like probably some obvious ones out there, like our city hall, Founder's Park, any other things that, not really, but you guys would vote upon it probably, like where you guys want, because branding, this is something that, you know, when the citizens go by, they see karma. You want to be high vis. This is really important for them in our city to kind of get the word out there, and businesses, you want them to see it and say, oh, I want one of those. And how do I get one of those? And the Economics Council, they're also, that's their job, too. They're getting that word out there to businesses. We've already got, I know a handful of businesses that are already very interested in this. But a big hurdle to that is total cost ownership. So the Economics Commission, they are supposed to be coming in to finish that, for the installers' pricing. And that first order quantity will tell us how much the delivery cost is. So we know that that could be a hurdle for some businesses, because if it's, say, it's a total of $4,000, including the artist, because they have to, they have to design the, actually paint it, coat it, that we don't know how much that could be. So there's a couple of things of unknowns we still need to have answered before we're really ready to, like, kick this thing off. And then, of course, the written policies. I did contact three cities, Norfolk, Custer, South Dakota, and Lexington, North Dakota, lineup. Fortunately, I haven't heard back, and I don't know that we will, but the idea was not to reinvent the wheel, but in concept, I don't think it should be too complicated. We just want to make sure that we're writing a policy that says for our businesses to follow step-by-step instruction, how to order it, give them some left and right lateral boundaries, so they know what they can put on there. I don't think we should, we think of the worst, but we know that they're probably going to be very reasonable human beings. And then mainly maintenance fees. I was talking to Norfolk, Virginia about a year ago, when I started looking at the concept. It's mainly when they fall into disrepair, right? So it's still our branding, it's our city. If they start falling apart and someone sees it, that's also looks bad upon our city. But there's a lot of awesome things that we can do with this, like if we put Karma Hunt on there. It's a big deal for the other cities. If people come by and they like to take pictures with them, and they like to see what's going on with them, and you can dress them up, and you can get them involved with different holidays and themes that are going on, and you can change different things going on with that hunt. The city can get more involved with it as well, and, thank you. That sounds like a good idea. And then all of it could go back to like a website or something that can, that can spread more information as well. So, once again, link up with other arts projects that are going on throughout the city. But once again, it's just a really connecting the population with the city of Covington in a good, fun way. Questions?
Christina.
Do you have a ballpark for us? I know you, you mentioned it, but like for the fourth or five or six? I do. So the big chunk is going to be the developmental fee, because what comes into that is we send them our, what we have, like pictures, whether that's sketches, or that's just like, if we know we want it to look like our mascot, our actual mascot, we would send them photos of that. They would create the 3D modeling and then the actual mold. And so if that was going to be like a four foot, I'm sure the prices have changed a little bit. It's about, for four foot tall, this development fee, $7,000, five foot, about $8,000. But then every subsequent one for a four foot is $1,000. In the same pattern or? Right. So whereas like you'd initially pay $7,000, everyone after that is only $1,000. So we would pay that upfront, so the businesses really know what we saw, $1,000 per karma. And then, yeah, it goes up pretty much incrementally, five foot, six foot tall per piece, and then the shipping fee, that can be that, I think that could be a big hurdle, too, so we, and that's another conversation piece, like, we know we want to do two to four. I think we have to get about eight in a truck before it gets, before we can spread the load of that cost to where it could drive the cost down to our businesses to really feel the the economic impact spread. So if we were to do four, that'd be great. If we're only going to do two, then we need to increase the businesses that are interested, and that will sign on.
Sean.
Okay.
No, no.
It's great. I'm real excited about this. I really appreciate the thought going into developing the policy. I would never even consider that we have to tell people whatnot, what are, like, that makes full sense. I appreciate that. I'd also be interested in what types of paint work on these, you know, so getting some guidance, you know, I'm sure the company knows, but you'd hate for these businesses to buy paint and then it not stick or not look right, so some some guidance on the types of decorations that'll actually look good for a long time. And then you mentioned about cost being one of the things. I wonder if in, and you mentioned they fall into disrepair. They get a policy that those businesses actually don't own this. They kind of lease it from us, and then we can, if it does fall into disrepair, take it back. I would hate to get anyone fighting over, you know, a karma that's both directly to us. And it's, right, so I'm just thinking out loud on that. Just two more things, and then with following up on the public art, I'm just curious how resistant the vandalism will stay on. Obviously, these will be in much more visible and highly trapped areas, but somebody might take a skateboard, this would be interested to hear a little more on how durable these are for them to shell out $7,000 to start. And then finally, just always thinking about trying to how to make them more interactive, and just that you know, at the park a while ago in Massachusetts. And they had a really interesting thing on the trail. It was a box that was about yay high and it had a hand crank, so, and then it would play, you know, music and kind of displaying what you're looking at, but that would work 24 hours a day at any time. That's expensive, but, you know, just being creative on how we enrich that experience with people that, you know, maybe have limited vision or whatever, I think, you know, be thinking about all the ways you can interact with these. I'll see if I can figure out how much something like that costs, but it was, I was really impressed. No electricity, you just hand crank it for a second, and it just plays. Your recorded video or a record.
Thank you.
Beth.
Can you clarify something, then, like, when they, if are the karmas sent to us blank?
Blank.
Oh, they are blank. Okay, so it's not incorporated in that. Okay. Got it.
Then they do have recommendations, but we would, as the Arts Council or Arts Commission, gather some artists and have recommendations for the businesses. They wouldn't be out on their own, unless they wanted to be. But we would, we would have people to recommend and say, these are some good artists that we know that do mascot painting, that know what they're doing. That would be part of our, our tasking to be able to to present them with the knowledge.
Do they offer a version that has, like, the color pigment built in so that it's more durable? Or like, can they put a design on it and, like, seal it or do something as factory so that it's, that's not really an option or no?
I don't think it's the option for what we're looking for, since we want our businesses to design them on their own, or like to, you know, to match whatever they want.
And the businesses order directly from them, but we try to batch it so that we make the shipping cost more reasonable.
So we would get like a truckload of eight blank white karmas, and then we would set them up with preferably call it preferred vendor list, and saying, here's some artists that we know well, that do this for a living, or know how to do these kind of things, that have the correct materials that coat them with vandalism coatings, or vandalism resistant coatings, and then from there, we would approve the designs. I know we talked about this a little bit, definitely the Economics Commission, because we don't want to limit what they do with them and say particularly that's a terrible design, because what is art, right? But from there, we would say, yes, this is good to go. This is meeting our, our values, you could say, and then it would be on the business, it would be on them. This would really be hands-off to a really big extent, and then it would be upon us and the Economics Commission to engage with them to continue to do further community engagement. Like I said, if there's a holiday theme, or we're going to try to dress up all the dress up all the karmas, or we want to get them onboard for another hunt or another community engagement. Then that's, it's not as hands-off. It's, we want, we know they want to keep the vault. It's more like, when I was talking to Norfolk, they've had their program for over 20, 25 years. So after that long, that's when you start to see things fall into disrepair, because businesses go out of business, right?
Yeah.
COVID happens, right? And all of a sudden, mermaids start, or they start just like going into disrepair. We're trying small. We are much larger. They're huge, like millions of people in their city, but I think we can control ours a lot better. I think we're going to be we're much more engaged with our city and businesses as well, so I don't foresee us going down that track, but it's just something to be aware of. And I think it's important to write into whatever contract that we signed with them that, I think it's totally fair. That, I I think it's totally fair. To have requirements that they keep them in good working repair, because it is, while they may buy them. Uh, it is still a representation of the city, so they have responsibilities, just like any HOA or.
Joe.
I know you. I know we mentioned maybe having in front of schools and the cost for these, uh, would we offer? These, the karmas have like a discount to the schools, since it's, they're not. Out there actively making a a profit, so they're not, it's one of those things that are hard, maybe harder for them to do, pay for.
Now I wanted to like. This has been a discussion topic, I don't want to go like. Tip of the iceberg, um, but it has been a discussion, uh, but we'd have to talk to lawyers on how involved. We can get, because the art commission would love to make, see this project go forward, um, we don't want businesses or schools or anybody. Not be able to do this, so if there's a way that we could use our um, funding that we get. To be able to cover some of the costs, like the artist costs, to say they could fund. The actual thousand dollars and five hundred bucks for install installations, it's like, and then the shipping, so they they can do two grand, but they can't. Make the, the grand for the, the artists, and we can, we can do it. Is it legal? Is it fair to everyone else? There's, so we, we've been, it's a discussion that we want to, we want to look into it. Um, and see the feasibility. Uh, legally. Helping get some of our. Over that line, because we want to be able to do that. Uh. Thanks. And. So yes, it's been a discussion, there's, we definitely want to, to consider everybody, and if we can find a way to legally do that, then yes.
Dug tailing on that, in the future, when you do have a hotel, you have that hotel tact that you mark right now for public art. So that might be a potential source, but I think just to answer your question, you know, like. If you want to spend the money, we can do that.
We also go and get the schools to actually see this to take it.
Well, and there are quite a few schools.
Yeah, yeah.
There might even be. You have your end up, sorry.
I was just thinking, one thing we, we might suggest would be. Working with some of the um, nonprofits and community clubs, like let's say the Rotary. To get a grant for schools, so that it isn't actually the city giving preference to a school and paying for it. But, but the school could apply to a civic group or a nonprofit. Um, for a grant for funding for that, so that might take us out, and I just want to circle back to one thing that Sean said, I I do. Really like the idea of having standards around the, the medium that's used and the, the paint and the coating, because. If we don't, and somebody can find a cheaper way to do it, and then it gets in disrepair, yeah, so that could. You're on the right track, so you you're going to have standards in a, in a policy, so.
I was just gonna kind of go down the same lines as um, as Debbie, but there may be private citizens that are willing to contribute to an art fund that would help. You know, for some of these, well, I mean, that's not really the art commission's responsibility to do that, but I mean, working partnership. Um, and then it would take the burden off of the city having any liability of playing favorites, but.
Thank you, Councilor.
Any other questions on this one? All right, thank you.
Just finish up, it takes decision, curious, so as we look through this, we're kind of, I started talking to Norfolk in August of last year, so um. Just trying to push this forward, there's a lot of next steps, there's a lot of like gavel banging that needs to happen.
Ready. I love it.
Yes, there's one of those things where I, uh, it could easily be talked about month to month and not really move anywhere, be here next year talking about some stuff, so. Um, do everything I can to push it, I'd be pushing, um, but it really probably will come down to some. Some city and commission, and economic commission, um, decisions being made and finalized.
I might even owe a six foot one for myself. Put it in a lion shirt, Jennifer.
There you go.
So speaking of gavel banging, is this at a point where it would be ready for a. A budget card, or would it not come to us until next October? I want to make sure the commission is aware of our gavel banging timelines. So we, we look at our budget, we just got our budget workbooks, it's happening essentially.
Yeah.
I, I believe some funding has been allocated for that for twenty twenty-five, I'm not sure the exact number at this time, but I know that it has been a recent discussion.
Okay. Do, do you know Ethan, is there something that's going to be in our budget workbooks?
Uh, I'm not as involved in some of the discussions that are happening with this, I know they are happening, but I believe. Uh, it's a gifting of public funds issue that we just need to uh, sort through or make sure it's not a gifting of public funds issue, and so. Finding the right uh, format for this program, uh, I kind of believe is where it's at right now. Uh, but we can touch base with Regan on this.
I don't want to give the impression to the commission that it's dragging out, but we do, in October, we have our budget workshop, and that's where we make. Really specific decisions, and then we approve our budget in December, so. Yeah, it's not pretty much ready to go at this point, it may not catch us until next.
We'll hold that by next, next year's joint meeting, we have, we have this up and running.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Bob. Um, Jonathan, I think you might have a couple more details. Have you been exchanging information? Sorry, these are Riley's two big ideas. I think you might have a couple more.
Yeah, two big ideas that are going forward, I think you guys have referred to them before, uh, a little bit, but it hasn't stopped um, being on my mind a lot. We have the crosswalks, um, this is Riley's kind of her passion. Uh, it just really comes, she's been doing a lot of research into Seattle's policy, um, and what is allowed, what isn't allowed, and so she, um. Her idea came back pretty much to the location that she looked at, it it comes down to what's allowed legally. Uh, there's a stop center, there isn't, but she, she located a few within the city, and she's, and if it's a policy that was written just for Seattle or if it's something that needs to be. And, um, or if it's something that actually applies here, so she's kind of looking into those two policies, uh, or if it can be. Changed for our location, uh, then we've got some more fantastic locations that we. Go for, uh, and so that's the city ordinance we passed, waiting for direction, but I think that's more from. Us, our own commission, figuring out if uh. To to provide more information for our, our commission to you guys, uh, make sure that it isn't just a legality issue, but it also is just like a.
Both of these programs are being developed in the same sort of vein as the rotating art program and the utility wraps program. But I do know that at present, and I just verified that with Ethan, that it's currently sitting in community development right now. Just to look at the different sort of ordinances that uh, need to be clarified to make sure that we can move those projects forward.
The ideas are there, they're great, it's just safety, right, we got to make sure that we're doing them safely. And once again, community engagement art, um. Doing it quickly, murals, uh, I think everybody's, it is black and white, murals are great, uh, I think everybody's on the same page, this would add a lot of um. Color into our city, and I know we're looking at specifically near, um, it's pretty much on there, but um. The Keweenie High School mural by the youth commission, but also we know that we're talking about the, um.
There's, there's been discussion of a, of a possible um, mural commission uh, on the, the side of the police station, um, to maybe. To promote the future um, community center and new aquatic center, but uh, that, these are preliminary discussions that I have not been a part of. Been made aware of.
I don't know, I was just saying like, this is like, so that's where they call the big ideas, the things that we are in discussion, uh, the idea is to quickly. Like over time, gather more information, try to figure out as much as we can, um, and, and build upon these. Uh, to, to get to community and to continue, like, as we go through the rotating art commission, or rotating art. Um, and the art calls, as we're learning, we would just apply these same principles to the murals. Um, some fantastic artists, like we did with the mural artists that did the chop art, um, we're learning that that kind of. Uh, engagement is not as hard as we thought, and, and we've got plenty of cities around us that we are talking to, um, and uh. All, we've spun balls away, we've already gathered plenty of information from them, um, how they engage with their artists and, um. And the different styles that we'd like to see within the city, it's pretty cool, um, it's just. Getting it over those hurdles, those initial things, it's quite, it's quite a lot, uh, so those are the big ideas, those are the things we're going to be working on twenty twenty-five. Um, as we go forward, there's the crosswalks, that's like, um, city ordinances and the murals, there's, there's a lot, but we've got some great locations. We just got to figure out all the, the details, and he wants us to put them up there, but I know you guys would want to see more color and more stuff coming into your city.
Christina.
I love their, our logistics that I have to be able to get. There's a lot of, I was just going to ask, um, like you mentioned, where the police station currently is, but moving to where Founders Park is, I know. There, there's not a great parking space on that side, so there's going to be quite a hefty crosswalk. Just right there in front of Founders Park. Is that where you were thinking as well?
Yeah.
So I'm like, I'm just thinking, right?
I'm just wondering when we, we touched on a mural there outside the police station, can we put a donation box there? Hundred and eighty million dollars for a new community center is a lot, maybe we can.
Another thought, and I don't know if it would fall under the mural category or not, but there's those large concrete, um. Barricades that are at the police station, which should be there because they need to like protect, but they, could they get painted and like, is there an ordinance that would? You know, we probably follow them the same.
We can definitely.
Way, because decorate that, that's whatever.
Absolutely.
Right, that's what, that's what they're going to do, um, specifically, those are hurdles we're, we're addressing. Okay, if we can, and if we can, we want to paint everything.
Is this the last slide?
Yeah, we only have fifteen minutes, so. Like it.
Two things, so I was thinking, do you have a storm ranger program here, where a drain ranger, where people can, uh. Basically sponsor, especially storm training. Think where they're allowed to, to decorate it too, it'd be great. I, I've seen other cities that have branded stuff, and they put out the history, it's the local stream, Jenkins Creek, it'd be interesting to see if there's a. Crossover there to get some art that just, again, gets people thinking about where is this, this water going and making it fun. And then the other thing, I mentioned this to the RFA, the Regional Fire Authority, um, I think. You could actually paint a lot of figures too, they've got some uh, guidelines on those, I can confirm that, but it would be great if we.
Could you, could you get back to us?
Yeah, I'll see you later.
Thank you.
But it'd be, I've asked about it, if we have, you know, it doesn't have to be this year, but you know, maybe that's another pullout where we put some framers on. But other communities doing.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Uh, another kind of crazy idea, which is probably way down the technical line, but something to, to think about or maybe discuss with businesses, there's a, um. There's a mural uh, in Pittsburgh, uh, one of the stadiums, I don't remember the name of it off the top of my head, but it's to honor, uh. Hockey legend Mario Lemieux, and it was an interactive thing where people would take photos and then send their photos in, and then. I think it was, I don't know if it's the city or it was actually the stadium, or the team made a mural out of it that looked like Mario Lemieux. Like, so if we, I don't, it, it, it'd have to be like glass and clear it outside, but it might be an opportunity to have some kind of a. Icon, it could be a karma or something like that, maybe that if a business was going to sponsor something like that, and then. Fans can go and check it out, oh, there's my picture of me, and so there's a lot more interaction to it, bigger, but um. I, I don't, I just, a different, we always think of paint, because it's kind of easy, right, but there might be some other opportunities to have a variety of art, so that. You know, and that would be a really iconic, I mean, you've got, I don't know if you can see it on my phone, but I mean, it's just really cool to go see it, uh, and then get close to it. Look for your photo, anyway.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Christina.
Um, I heard Justin mentioned this in a, start remembering, because every time you're going through. It's a lot, it's a lot of like small town, the whole town is a lot. Um, there's something that makes it so only family oriented, and one of those things needs to flower.
Yeah.
I don't know if that means you'd have to get entirely. Or like clothes, or is it something that you can weld onto those, I, I don't know. But even just that small portion of the downtown core, um, it really does a lot. For not just that it'd be so industrial, but.
Flowers speak their own language, that, you know.
Anyone else?
Any questions, comments?
The lavender's great.
I just want to say thank you very much, I really, we really appreciate. The imagination, the collaboration you have with the Economic Development Council and. With karma and all these great ideas, um. We're just, you're, you've already started the foundation of art in Covington, and just building on that and just beautifying the city is. It's awesome, because I remember what it looked like. When we first started back in the eighties, and it was just like brick and mortar, and it's slowly getting. The art, so thank you, thank you all for your dedication and commitment to Covington and to each other, so thank you. Anything else? Well, thank you all very much, and uh, keep up the great work, looking forward to. Beating yours adjourned, thank you.